Select Board Meeting. I will ask for a roll call.
Frank West here.
La'Lea Maselli here.
Greg Bendel's here.
Kevin Kira here.
And Garrett DePalmas here.
Like everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to apply to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Going to ask for a motion to, uh... Oh, we just, uh... Sorry about that. Uh, we just, um, came from an executive session, uh, as read. I'm going to ask for a motion for transfer emitting of Treasury warrants. Warrant number twenty-four thirty-three, twenty-four thirty-three W, twenty-four thirty-three T, twenty-four thirty-three S, twenty-four thirty-four, twenty-four thirty-four W, and twenty-four thirty-four T.
Make a motion approve?
Second.
All those in favor? So moved. Next, I'll be asking for a motion to approve the minutes from February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? So moved. I am going to open a public hearing for the acceptance of streets at the town meeting, i.e., uh, Green Meadow Drive. Our seven-ten, uh, seven o'clock appointment. Do I have a motion?
I move to open the public meeting, public hearing, excuse me.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Approved. Now, who's here from, uh...
No. Mr. Chair, this is the, uh, the public hearing at the part of the regularly scheduled meeting on, uh, February twenty-sixth, today, seventeen, at Town Hall. This is relative to the streets to be accepted at the May fourth, two thousand and twenty-four annual town meeting. The streets are, are as follows, Green Meadow Drive. This is the, uh, the process of what you, uh, this board took last meeting to go, so to make this go to town meeting, to make...
I'm going to take out of order. Board to consider...
Consider six.
This is number six, the accepting of Green Meadow Drive for further actions relative to the acceptance of the street at an annual town meeting on Saturday, May fourth. Do I have a motion?
Public comments first?
Public comments, sorry. Oh, didn't even see you there. Would you like to speak?
No, this is...
Oh. No one's here?
Chair, I move to close the public hearing.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Approved. Hey, I'm going to take out of sec, out of, uh, order. A board to consider accepting the Green Meadow Drive for further actions relative to the acceptance of street at the annual town meeting on Saturday, May fourth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we accept the Green Meadow Drive for further action relative to acceptance of streets at the annual town meeting on Saturday, May fourth, two thousand and twenty-four.
I'll sec... I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Approved. Next on our, our appoint, next appointment is, uh, Bonnie Smith. The Chair of the Historical Commission, and this is a real request for support of an application for the Mass, Massachusetts Prevention Project Fund.
Mr. Chair, good evening. This is the, um...
You got the chair.
You got the bad chair.
I feel like I'm the little kids. Uh, this is very similar to the letter they're looking for with, for the town clerk's office that did their, uh, grant for the, uh, records restor, restoration.
Hi, thanks for having us. Um, I'm Bonnie Smith, Chair of the Historical Commission, and as the item stated, we need to have, there's a lot of steps to that grant, which Matt and I have never been through before, so we're stumbling through it. Um, Matt has done the lion's share. This is Matt Beers, our, uh, museum curator, has been with us since September. Uh, got thrown into this thing. Um, so, uh, I'm going to turn this over to Matt and let him take it.
Yeah, so as Bonnie said, my name is Matt Beers. I'm the new curator of the Wilmington Town Museum. Um, it's very nice meeting everyone, uh, and finally, after six months. Um, but really, we wanted to sort of update, uh, everyone on what we're trying to do with this, with this grant specifically. So as, uh, to recap, um, our roof has to, uh, be reconstructed and, and, and replaced for both the tavern and the carriage house. Um, right currently, there's a bunch of, uh, significant holes, um, in, in the roof as well, on both buildings. And so we're working with the Public Buildings Department to, uh, acquire funds which were allocated, um, and set it up to bid and, and finally get it in, in progress. Unfortunately, a couple of months ago, the bids that we received were significantly higher than, uh, what was allocated. So in essence, it was roughly, as you probably know, it's roughly, um, there is, I believe, a total budget of roughly about a hundred forty thousand dollars. What we received back, there was one for, uh, two hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars and another one for four hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars. And of course, that's, uh, almost, uh, way out of our budget. So we wanted to, um, use this opportunity with the Mass Historical Commission to see if we can, um, acquire the funds for this grant and hopefully put that towards, uh, the replacement of this roof. Um, and, and part of that is we have to place a preservation restriction onto the property. And I apologize, we didn't mention this, uh, to the clerk. We do have a copy of the preservation restriction, which would need to be, um, accepted. It's actually the same preservation restriction that's on the Richardson's House, as well as the Buttish Farmhouse, but obviously, um, relative to, uh, the four-thirty Salem Street, uh, address. So this would have to be approved and hopefully approved by today, so that we can go ahead and, um, apply for the grant successfully. Without, without a preservation restriction, they, they, they will not look at, at the application. Um, we also included the letter of support, uh, that is also needed for the, um, the grants. And that's about it, the, for what we have.
Anybody have any questions? Um, Matt has copies of the preservation restriction. If anybody would like to see them, he made copies for everyone.
Oh, awesome, terrific.
We'd like to thank everybody that's helped us through this process, too. We've been bugging, uh, Megan Jones, I put us onto this.
Thank you, Matt.
Uh, we've been bugging Dennis and, and, uh, everybody to get us pieces of information.
Thank you.
It's a very detailed grant application, however, they are very helpful. At the very end, they give you a checklist to make sure you got everything you needed. So Matt's about ninety-eight percent there. So, um...
Any questions from members?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just like to make a comment. Matt, welcome to Wilmington as far as your position. I know you and I have, uh, worked on a couple of different facets, so I just wanted to say to Bonnie, as, as the Chair of the Historical Commission, that you are welcome addition to the, uh, to the town and to the tavern.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else?
I think this is, this is great, and I support it.
Just keep our fingers...
Yes. Is, I do have one que, question. Is, um, is, is this kind of a grant that you can apply for at any time, or is there a deadline?
So the deadline is March fifteenth.
It is, okay.
Yes, so we're, we're pretty tight, um, and this would, following this grant, we would have to start the project no earlier than July first.
Okay. Great, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, Matt, welcome. This is a great start.
Yeah.
Hopefully, it's going to, you know, work out, come to fruition, and you'll be able to get these funds. Uh, Bonnie, I, I, you know, the, the money that was allocated, I, I, I mean, there was discussion, and this is what it was going to cost, and this is... And what happened? How did it...
Might be able to...
How did we get...
Dennis came to, uh, answer those questions.
Yeah, how did we get to this point? Because I thought we had allocated the funds appropriate for, for both roofs.
But you know...
Or even for the windows and other...
It's gotten so expensive.
Yeah.
And I think, well, sometimes these, uh, contractors would just throw something against the wall and hope it sticks. It's like, yeah.
So Dennis Kelly, Superintendent of Public Buildings. Um, the process, um, to get money appropriated and go to town meeting, we work with engineers. They do the design, and then they go out and look at what things are costing in the industry. There's not a lot of, um, cedar shake roofs out there, um, so that's part of the problem. It's a specialty, uh, so you're looking for people that have availability to come in and court on these things aggressively. Well, there's no one that bid aggressively, as you see the results. We only got three bids, and one come in after the time, so we couldn't even open that, so we have no idea where that came in, and the other two were substantially higher. So based on the information we received from the engineers that we were working with on, based on costs, that's the numbers we went out and appropriated money for. When we did the tavern roof ten years ago, it was done for forty thousand. So we were planning on ninety, I believe ninety-eight with design, and it come in at a hundred and seventy. So, um, the engineering firm was surprised. We were surprised. I talked to a few contractors, they were actually surprised. But you're at the mercy of those, um, specialists. What we're doing now is working to split up the two roofs, because there's a lot more people that do asphalt roofs. So the, um, carriage house, we're going to be able to do asphalt on, so we're going to separate that. That roof should, should come in a lot lower, because it's going to become under the hundred thousand mark. We don't need, the vendor doesn't need to be D-CAM certified, which gives, opens the pool a little bigger. Even residential or local, I should say, uh, roofers could apply for this, as long as they pay prevailing wage to their crews. So that roof, we might get a lot more people in on, um, but when you get to the cedar roof, we're at the mercy of the few people that actually do it. And if their schedule's not full, they're probably a little more aggressive, but if their schedule's full, they're, they're looking at, well, I'll give you a number, and if you say yes, I'll make a lot of money.
Yeah.
You know, it's how we have to look at it. There's, there's no exact science to say, how much does a cedar shake roof cost in this timeframe? Because there's not a lot of it going on, maybe down in Cape, but not here.
Yeah, yeah.
And does the, the roof at the carriage house, it's appropriate for the, for the time of the structure?
It's been approved to do, it's asphalt now, so it's been approved to keep that. But the hu, the main house itself, they'd really like to keep historic with the cedar shake. You know, obviously, we could do it a lot cheaper if we ripped that off and went to asphalt. There'd be a lot more prep and things, but, um, to keep the historic preservation or the historic look to it, we want to really try to do that. So this matching grant would take the money we already had and hopefully match it, um, to increase our amount and go after the carriage house for that. But the money we'll take out for the carriage house itself, hopefully, we'll have enough bidders to make this aggressive. And again, asphalt's a normal roofing material. It's going to be an architectural shingle, which is a normal roofing material, so the pool should be a lot bigger.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we were fortunate enough that the town, um, voted to give us that money for this, because we could use that as the matching grant. We would never have been able to go after this, had that not happened.
Well, let me ask you a question. So the town appropriated the eighty thousand and then seventy thousand for, for that? And you're looking to match that? So then where's the money for the, for the carriage house roof coming from? If the other two portions are going to match funds for the, for the shingles, then where is the...
The two projects were combined.
Should there be something put into the, the town meeting warrant for...
There were, there were three warrants last year.
Yeah.
One was the windows, one was the carriage house, one was the, the, uh, the tavern.
Yeah.
So, um, we're, we're looking for, and that was a question I was going to have for you as well. This is a fifty, fifty percent...
It's a fifty percent matching grant.
Matching grant.
Where we can receive at least, or up to seventy-five percent.
So it brings our little chunk of money up, but what if it's not enough? What, what do we do then? I don't know how that works. Do we, do we go back to the town and ask for... Does it go in a warrant article? Are we too late to do that? I don't know how this works. This is all new to me.
Well, you're not too late for, for a warrant article, but I'm just trying to reconcile. So you have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right, with the combined roofs?
I think it was ninety thousand approved for the main house, and then six, if I remember correctly, sixty thousand approved for the carriage house. And then there was the window project. So we combined the, the two projects, hoping to get people to be a little more aggressive, because they were going after everything on the property at once, um, at the time. And so they, when the bids came back, they were high. So we're looking at separating that money again, and then this grant would go after the matching money for the, the ninety thousand or eighty thousand, whatever it was, I don't have the exact number on me, to increase that number to, to try to get that roof done. But we should, in theory, have enough money in that, the appropriation from the warrant for the carriage house with the, with the amount of bidders. I mean, again, we, we, we don't, all we can go by is the, the data we're being, um, that's being shared with us from the engineers and the designers, and that's based on their, their current experience.
So you're, you're also not giving as, as much of a window for them to get the bids back to us either?
Well, there's going to be a lot more people on the asphalt roof. And then, um, so they weren't, they weren't on separating those two. Hopefully, we'll be in central register this week and next week on the, um, window project and the, um, carriage house roof.
I, I, I'm not following the numbers, and that's fine. I guess I just don't, you know, you're talking about one being two hundred eighty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars, the other four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, and you're telling me that the, the two combined budgets, which was ninety thousand and sixty, this says eighty and seventy, still a hundred and fifty? And then if you go for the matching funds, that brings you up to three hundred thousand. It doesn't come near the seven hundred thousand that the two combined are.
Well, those, those two amounts...
I understand.
I'm trying to help out here, I just...
Those two amounts are separate bids. The two hundred thousand and the four hundred, and the four hundred were two separate bids for the two projects.
So out of the three bids, one we couldn't open, so we have no idea what that is. One come in at two and change, the other one in four and change, whatever it is. So, um, and that was to do both, both companies, to do both roofs. So now we're looking at separating those, and hopefully, um, by doing that, again, the asphalt people, there's a lot more of them. Hopefully, we'll get a lot more bids on that, it'll be a lot more, a little bigger bidding war. But the, again, cedar shake roof, we're based on, um, the experience that our designers are sharing with us. There isn't a big pool of people out there doing it. Um, if it came back in, I talked, when I talked to the Finance Committee, if it came back in and it was too high, we may have to go back to the Finance Committee and talk to them about it, because they were interested in trying to figure a way. But our options are, uh, small right now, because we could try to appropriate more money, but I can't tell you where it's going to come in. So separating them and looking at where we come in on this asphalt roof may help us. And then we're also coming into the new season, so during winters and roof, roofers will lay off crews. They go down to Florida, because they can work all year round, and this time of year, they stop bringing them back. So if we get out there early enough on this asphalt, and people are trying to fill their schedules, it will help. But there is no data available, or simple data available for a cedar shake roof. And that, I agree with what you're saying, that we don't know where it's going to come in. And going back out right now, there could be a bigger pool, because people are filling their summer schedule. But, um, you know, that's why the grant's really going to help. I don't think we're going to come anywhere near what we have appropriated, and that was based on numbers that were shared with us and...
Yeah, and I get, and I, I thought these two figures were for the two separate. One was for the carriage and one was for the...
Oh, no, no, no. We tried to combine them to get more attention.
I get you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for your efforts here.
I have a question, if I may. So are you looking for us, um, to sign the letter and then also the preservation restriction?
Yes, that would be for both.
So do we have to add that to the motion, because that was not on the agenda?
That's a question. Uh-oh.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
I don't either, I just want to make sure we do it.
We can do that, uh, to consider, you know...
Yeah, okay.
Because it does reference, uh...
It does.
Preservation, projects, funds.
Yeah, yeah, I just want to make sure that we just...
It references it, so...
Protocol-wise, we do.
We apologize for not...
No, no, my gosh, I'm glad you got in, because there's no way, if we don't do this tonight, they're not going to get it in time for the grant. So it needs to be done tonight.
Yes, tonight.
Okay.
So be it. Okay, I'm going to take out of, are you...
Nope. I just don't know what to do now.
I'm going to take, uh, board to consider signing the, uh, Community Letter of Support, uh, to the Mass Preservation Project Funding.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we sign the Community Letter and application of support for Massachusetts Preservation Project Fund.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Have some luck.
Thank you.
Best of luck. Thank you, guys.
And come to the museum, Matt's moved around.
Yes.
Does an excellent job.
All right.
Thanks, thank you, Arthur.
Excuse me. Uh, next on the agenda is to review the annual town meeting warrant articles submitted by petition.
Mr. Chair, there are four this year, uh, petitioned warrant articles. One is to rezone from Residential sixty R sixty to Residential R twenty. That is petitioned by Kay Costa. And one is town-owned land purchase. That is, uh, map ten, posses one twenty-nine thirty Malloy Road, and that is put in by Kay Barrett. Uh, and the other one is to rezone from General Business, GB, to General Industrial, GI, map thirty-nine possel eleven six eighty-five Main Street. That is petitioned by B. Wright. And to rename the Wuburn Street School, Richardson Elementary School, and that is submitted by D. Baloo.
Daniel Baloo. Comments? No comments?
If they're proper, put them on the warrant.
What?
I said if they're proper, they go on the warrant.
No. Well, the town-owned, the, the town-owned land purchase still has to go through a process...
Correct.
To see if there's surplus before we say this is going on the warrant.
Correct.
Right.
Move on to our seven thirty-five, which is preliminary discussions in the annual town meeting, non-petition warrant articles.
Mr. Chair, the warrant articles, let's start out with some of the, uh, standard articles. Article one is to actually vote on elections. Number two is to hear reports of committees and act therein. Article three is basically paying of unpaid bills. There's anticipated there'll only be one this year. Article four is entered to an agreement with one or more banks to maintain funds on deposit with such institutions. Article five is, uh, basically the town appropriate expenses of salaries and several town officers and departments. Article six, the capital equipment. Elderly services handicap van. Do you want me to give the amounts in there, too?
Uh...
Yep, yep, okay. Elderly services handicap van, accessible van is ninety-three thousand. Fight Department, purchase of one replacement ambulance, four seventy-five. That is going to be taken out of free cash. Department of Public Works, replacement of one Vector truck. That's for six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, three hundred and thirty will come out of free cash, and I believe the other three thirty will come out of the sewer department. Purchase of one replacement heavy-duty front-end loader, two hundred and five thousand. Purchase of one heavy-duty mini wing mower, fifty thousand. Purchase of one heavy-duty baseball infield groomer, that's thirty-eight thousand. Public Buildings Department, purchase one replacement Ford F-five-fifty box truck with lift gate, and that is eighty-nine thousand. Purchase of one Ford Maverick pickup truck, thirty-three thousand. And the school department is looking for one handicap accessible minivan for seventy-five thousand. Article seven is basically to comply with municipal separate storm sewer systems, national pollutant discharge elimination systems, the N-P-D-E-S, and that is for seventy-five thousand. Article eight is the PEG Access Cable Related Access Special Revenue Fund, and that is five hundred thousand. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate funds, that's basically, this one is for the funding of the Fourth of July celebration, that's fifty thousand. Article ten, to, to see if the town will raise a sum of money for the observance of Memorial Day and Veterans Day, and that is for thirteen thousand. Article eleven is for the, the two, this is a state mandated seven hundred and fifty dol, seven hundred and fifty dollars each to the VFW, the Veterans of Foreign Wars, and the American Legion Clubhouse. Article twelve is to vote determine the spending limits of revolving accounts established pursuant to Section fifty-three E and one-half of Chapter forty-four general laws, and section fi, section five of Chapter seventy-three of June thirty, two thousand and twenty-five as follows. That is the compost bin revolving fund, forty-five hundred dollars, and the subsurface sewage disposal upgrading revolving fund, that is two hundred thousand. Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote, is for the rehabilitation and lining of existing twenty-four-inch corrugated metal drainage culvert in the vicinity of three forty Ballard Vale Street. That's a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Article fourteen is for the conductor feasibility, excuse me, feasibility study for the Lowell Street Fields Recreation Area improvements. That is fifty thousand. Article fifteen, the feasibility study for schematic design to locate, locate a fire substation in North Wilmington. That is six hundred thousand. Article sixteen is for the installation of fiber connection at the New Elder Services Center Town Hall, School Administration Building, and the Fourth of July Building at fifty thousand. And Article seventeen is the maintenance, um, of the police, the firing ra, the, uh, firing range is forty thousand. Article eighteen is the replacement electronic control weapons, the tasers, at two, twenty thousand, five hundred. Article nineteen is continued phase cemetery development, that's sixty thousand. And the article twenty is to operate the Department of Public Works Sewer Division, the enterprise. That is the operating budget, it's three million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And article twenty-one is the design of the replacement pump station at Industrial Way Pump, at the Industrial Way Pump Station. That is the thirteen, a hundred and thirty-five thousand, that'll be out of that sewer enterprise fund. And then article twenty-two is replacement of classroom projectors at the high school. That's a hundred and thirty thousand. Article twenty-three is the replacement of a network switches at the high school, and that's a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Article twenty-four, to see if the town will vote and raise for the replacement upgrades of wireless access points within the high school building, that's ninety thousand. Article twenty-five, to see if the town, the replacement upgrade of Chromebooks, are seventy-five thousand. That's put in by the school committee as well. And then the O-PED Post-Employment, article twenty-six, is a million dollars. Article twenty-seven, the Capital Stabilization Fund, is one million dollars. Article twenty-eight is the Middlesex Retirement System, and is one point five million dollars. Article twenty-nine is to see what some of the town will vote to transfer into various line items of the fiscal year. That's when they allocate funds from, uh, departments that might have a little extra money left in them, and they take care of the budget. Article thirty is what, uh, you just voted on there, the Green Meadow Drive. Article thirty-one is the Section three A zoning law. Multiple, multi-family zoning for the MBTA communities, and that's right now currently being reviewed by town council. The state kind of threw us a little curveball at the last minute. Article thirty-two is the Shawshine Valley Regional Vocational Technical High School, and that is for a stable, to establish a stabilization fund. Article thirty-three is the opioid litigation settlement. That is, they, it was voted on at last town meeting, there just has to be some, basically adjustments on that. Article thirty-four is the ones that I've gone through, the petitioned articles. The one by Kristin de Costa, Kevin Barrett, and these are the ones that I just went over, too, the petitioned articles.
Thank you, Mr. Slumiglier. And now we will be discussing the select board's discussion, re, the process for the town manager interviews.
Do we, do we have any questions on the?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Some questions on the warrant?
No, any questions on those, I apologize.
I know I'm probably going to sound like a bad guy here, but article fifteen, do we have property to justify a feasibility, a six hundred thousand dollar feasibility study for a substation?
The answer to the question right now, no.
No.
There's a RFP that will be going out. So we anticipate having some property in not, not-too-distant future.
And the tasers, I see that that's back in the mix again. The, we're spending, it sounds like short money, twenty thousand five hundred, but we were supposed to, through a contract signed by the former town manager, get a whole set of tasers for zero cost. But here we're paying, so maybe the police chief can clarify that for us.
Yes, that's something the police chief could clarify. The way there's basically one taser company. And the different models have changed. So the police chief could explain better how they came up with this amount because of, I don't know, I wouldn't want to say it was the contract, or just because models have changed and these are, now need to be brought in, but that's definitely a question for the police chief.
Yeah, I mean, I want our guys to be
Yeah.
equipped the, the way they should be, but when you sign a, a contract that says you, you, you purchase fifty-three tasers and you'll get another fifty-three after five years, and then we don't get it and we're paying, it, it doesn't seem, doesn't seem right, but, to, to the taxpayer. The article thirty-two, the Shawshank Valley Regional Vocational Looking for a Stabilization Fund, is that something that they should be sponsoring rather than the select board? Just like our school committee sponsors? It's warrants, why, why is not the Shawshank Valley Regional Vocational School Committee sponsoring this article? Why do we have to sponsor it?
That.
I guess I'd ask.
Yeah, that.
Ask that question.
That.
That's a good.
Yeah, no, we, we intended to have this superintendent in. Mr. Department was gone, you know, on vacation. And we haven't invited him back in, but those are the questions that a lot of the surrounding towns have questions on the stabilization fund and why it was brought up.
Bring him in next meeting?
And then I just would make note of, and I've always, even at the, the last town manager, I went and added a little bit with him about the, the million dollars to OPEB and the million point five to the Middlesex Retirement System. You know, we, we, they have evaluation, they have appropriations. We're obligated to pay that appropriation up until, I believe, twenty thirty-five or twenty thirty-seven, when we're supposedly fully funded. And we're putting all this extra money into this system, and no one can seem to answer the question, is it bringing our unfunded liability down so that we're not paying until twenty thirty-seven? And the answer from the prior administrator and the, and the CFO was, was no, it doesn't, we're still paying off in twenty thirty-seven. I, I just don't know why we're keep putting this amount of money into those funds, but.
Obviously, I did this with the help of Brian Perry.
Yeah, yeah, and, yeah, and I brought that up to Brian, you know, and I, I, he, he says it doesn't change the date that the unfunded liability gets paid off, so. I just want to make sure that this money's being.
We're dumping two mil, two point five million back into it, and it's.
Spent appropriately, and I think the OPEB, I think that there's a, a cap. I think that it's something like, pay the, the amount of meals taxes, the maximum you can pay in it, rather than going over and above it. And I know that, again, it's another unfunded liability for health coverage, right? So, and, and it's something that we all have to do at some point, and, but it seems excessive to me. But that, those are just my personal comments, I mean, it's nothing.
Seems like, Mr. Kyra, last year you also brought it up, and we never got clarification, clarification on that neither.
No.
No, no disrespect to. You asked, and you weren't.
Okay.
Yeah, there's questions regarding. Next discussion will be the select board's discussion regarding the process for town manager interviews. I, first off, would like to say that after discussing with Mr. Slumiglier and everyone else, we were looking at March twelfth to do the interviews. And then I'd like to see us come back either the fourteenth or the fifteenth to actually make the vote. This way it gives us a few days to digest what we have heard. That's a Thursday or Friday?
Fourteenth or fifteenth, is that what you said?
Fourteenth or fifteenth.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Do we have any indication on how many finalists there are?
Four.
So are you suggesting that we're doing all four interviews on March twelfth?
That's what I was looking at. I was informed by Paragon Bernie that they should take about an hour apiece. They, what they, what they do is they'll come in and they will work the interviews. And as they're going along in the interviews, any questions that we want to individually ask, we can ask it anytime we want, during that question period or not. And he felt that we should get them, be able to get them done within an hour, hour and fifteen minutes, is the way it was put to me. Now, if you want to spread them out, so be it. But I was just thinking, we, we, we were talking about March twelfth at six P M, if I'm not mistaken. And I think we could get them resolved. Or do you want to, if you want to split them up into two days, that's fine.
Thank you, yeah, I think that, learning tonight that there's four, I'm inclined to try to split it up. I mean, if I think back to recent history, two thousand eight, I believe Mr. Kyra was chair, we hired town council. There was, I think, three or four firms at the time, with multiple nights of interviews and then a vote on a separate night. Twenty nineteen, I happened to be chair, we interviewed two candidates for, we had three, one dropped out. We interviewed two for town accountant, we had multiple nights and then a vote. And then, you know, not to belabor the point, but each one of our building projects has gone through similar, you know, senior center, OPM hiring, multiple nights, then a vote. For architects, same thing, town hall, school administration building, same thing. You know, I, I wonder with a decision as important as this, and an interview process is important as this, I wonder why we would, you know, strain ourselves and, quite frankly, the candidates. You know, I hate to be the person interviewing for this job at ten forty-five start. I don't know what message that sends to them, but I want to be respectful of their time as well. So I'm inclined to split it up if, if possible. And I do like your idea of potentially taking the vote at a later date. But that's my first reaction here, is to try to, to split this up, whether it's two and two. That would be my.
Well, we could also do the twelfth and the thirteenth for interviews, and then again, come back in on the fifteenth and make the vote. The fifteenth meeting wouldn't be that long, because that, of course, would be the only thing on it, is to vote. Any suggestions?
Yeah, if I can, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think my only reaction to that, I, I like, obviously, this is a very important task that we're charged with, and, and I want to make sure that we do this correctly, but I feel like that we've done it right so far. We hired the firm, our screening committee has done a great job, I assume, and so I want to finish this strong. And I'm not sure what message we're sending to the community if we're taking the most critical vote we'll ta, ever take on a Friday night. I wonder what the reaction of folks would be if, if all of a sudden a board who meets, you know, every other Monday since, you know, in my lifetime, then all of a sudden met on a Friday night when no one knew we were meeting, to take a critical vote. I wonder how that reaction might be from folks. So that's my only concern, just initially hearing that.
Well, we can flip it over to the Monday, the eighteenth also.
Yeah, I agree, I think, you know, we would have to limit, we'd have to be really mindful of time having four people in one night. I mean, you're talking forty-five minutes, you know, we're going to need a little break in between just to, you know, decompress and get ready for the next interview. You know, and that's keeping time, that already, you know, that brings us to ten o'clock, and you know things are going to run long. And I don't think it's fair to any of the candidates or ourselves, because we all work day jobs, and then we're going to come in here, and I know we're going to all be tired, and I think the candidates will be too. And I agree, I wouldn't want to be that, you know, ten o'clock candidate, because you're not going to get the freshest crew here either, you know. So I think it's just, it's not fair to the candidates. So I would suggest, you know, splitting them up two and two. And then I also agree that, you know, pushing it to perhaps the next Monday. And I think that also gives us all individual time to really kind of go through things and, you know.
Digest everything that we've heard. I, I, like I said, I had brought this up, because twelve seemed like it was an agreeable date prior. And I have no qualms at all with if we decide to go the twelfth and the thirteenth, and then come back the following Monday, the eighteenth.
Do we have a meeting on the twelfth?
We have a meeting on the eleventh.
On the eleventh.
On the eleventh, sorry, okay.
That's what I just.
Thank you.
Which I'm open to, by the way, too, on the eleventh, then. Input, please.
Yeah, I, I agree with my colleagues, Mr. Bendel and Ms. Misselli, that it should be split two and two. And we should be voting on a regular, as far as I'm concerned, we meet on the twenty-fifth, we can vote on the twenty-fifth. But if you want to hold another meeting on the eighteenth, that's fine. But I certainly don't think that we should be interviewing four candidates starting, you know, at six fifteen, an hour each, with a fifteen-minute break in at, at each interval. I, I don't think it's fair to us, and I don't think it's fair to the candidates. I mean, I don't know the reasoning that the company has suggested all four in one night. Are they afraid that the other two will be watching the interviews and seeing what the questions are? I don't know. You know, but I'm pretty sure that these four individuals are familiar with the questions anyways. So I don't think that that's something that would stop
Well, how?
splitting it up.
How's the twelfth and the thirteenth interviews and the eighteenth a vote? So, does that sound comfortable to everyone?
I would just ask if we had confirmed with, not only the staff, but also WCTV. That may very well be a Wednesday, I know, school committee meetings, I'm not sure, I want to make sure that that can be broadcast.
And we want to make sure that it's not a town hall, school administration meeting, or a senior center meeting here.
That's why I said.
I mean, yeah.
Sorry, that's why I mentioned the eleventh, we're already here, we're scheduled to be here.
So you're suggesting, Greg, the eleventh and the twelfth?
Yeah, I think if we all agreed that we were available on the twelfth, and we are already assumed to be here on the eleventh.
Right.
I'm not sure what's on the agenda, but I don't know anything more pressing than this. So, in my mind, it works out that we could be here on the eleventh. If we had, you know, other items of business we had to take care of beforehand, okay. But I think the priority should be that those interviews take place somewhere around the eleventh and twelfth, and then we could vote shortly thereafter. And, and I think it's important that we get some input from folks, too. I think that, you know, we have the opportunity to hear from people. And I wonder what the public input, other than obviously being able to contact your elected officials, I don't know if there'll be Q and A. I know some towns and other positions that we've hired in the town, I can remember when we were hiring the superintendent of schools, twenty seventeen, and when it was an opportunity for the public to weigh in. So I just wanted to, and I appreciate you putting this on the agenda, full disclosure, I'd asked for this discussion to be on. So I appreciate that, Mr. Chair, but I want to make sure that we do this right, you know, and that we finish strong. I feel like we've had a good process here, so. And that's, that's why I'm, I'm asking some of these questions. I also want to wonder, when will be the timeframe we get the resumes and the names? So we, I mean, just so everyone knows, it's clear, we don't have the names, we don't have the resumes.
I've been informed it's within a week of the dates we set down.
Okay.
Just so you know, just to give you a heads up, March, March thirteenth is a school committee meeting.
So then we should probably do, I think we should do it, Mr. Bendel recommended, we should do it on the eleventh and the twelfth?
Okay, so we'll go eleventh and twelfth. And what day would everyone like, do you want to stay with the eighteenth?
Doesn't look like there's anything.
Personally, I would like him to be on separate days, other than the regular meeting, but that's fine, I'll go with the majority. It's already almost eight o'clock, and we have a pretty light agenda. You're talking about not having the four candidates in one night, because it's going to last us until eleven, eleven-thirty. You're going to tack on a couple more hours, so you'll be here for that. You know, everybody's trying to get reasonable with, with time. So you'll be here until eleven o'clock, if you're going to do a regular business meeting plus two interviews.
Can I just? I was going to recommend have, calling a meeting at six.
You can have a light agenda, too.
I was, yeah, just.
Keep a light agenda. We don't know what the agenda is.
Mr. Chairman, I was under the assumption there probably wouldn't be anything else on the agenda.
Right.
Again, this is just a date that's been carved out, that we traditionally meet. What happens on that night is up to you as Mr. Chair. If there's no other business to take up, then we start the, the interviews right away, you know, that's my.
On the night, that's.
I'm not, yeah, I want to make sure, that's a good point, Mr. Kyra, thank you, because I won't, I don't want it to me, mean like, we have an hour and a half meeting and then we start interviews, that wasn't my.
Right, I was under the impression it would be just interviews, yeah.
No, I was, when I had originally brought up the twelfth and the thirteenth, I was looking at it that that was the only thing that was going to be on the agenda, was the interviews. And then the night that we vote, I was also planning on having that as being the only thing on, on, unless we wanted to hold the, the vote till one of our regular meetings, but.
Well, now you're pushing off the candidates, too.
Yes.
Yeah.
If you do the interviews and you wait two weeks for.
Right.
I don't agree with that.
That's not fair to them.
I like, personally, I like the, what was it, the eleventh and twelfth? And, just make sure. Historical commissions on at seven, but.
Excuse me, Beverly is, she wants to.
That doesn't have way on the eleventh, you guys have a, a birthday mobile permit that's scheduled for seven o'clock, that's a public hearing.
Oh.
Thank you.
So we'll go twelve, you want to do twelve and school committee's on the thirteenth. You need to do the twelfth and the fourteenth, and then come over to the eighteenth and vote.
I'm just trying to put dates together.
Well, you just have the public hearing an hour earlier.
It's already publicized, can't.
But, Mr. Chair, if the public hearing is one item, I mean, is it really, you know?
Yep, then we have to stop an interview that we're starting at six to take that.
No, do the public hearing first and then.
I know, but we, I would assume we'd want to start interviews at six o'clock, if we could, on the eleventh.
Yeah.
And the public hearing's scheduled for seven. So.
I mean, I, I respect the school committee totally, but is there a reason why we can't have it on the same night as the school?
I was going to say the same thing.
Not at all.
I think we should just.
Yeah, I know. WCTV has done multiple meetings on multiple nights, the same night, so.
So, would you like to go back to the eleventh and twelfth, or the twelfth? So, would you like to go back to the eleventh and twelfth, or the twelfth and thirteenth?
Well, we can't do the eleventh because of the public meeting.
Okay, so the twelfth and thirteenth.
Twelfth and thirteenth. And then meet again on the eighteenth?
And then meet on the eighteenth for the vote. Does that, is that, is everyone comfortable with that?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll make it for interviews, the twelfth and the thirteenth of March. At six o'clock?
Six and seven, gonna, I would anticipate a break in between, so we're talking six and seven thirty?
Uh, well, on the, uh, the twelfth, it's our meeting, so it's, I was just saying.
The eleventh is where you want.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right.
I mean, if you, Mr. Chair, could I just say, you, the meeting's scheduled for six o'clock. By the time we settle in, the interviews would start at six fifteen, the first one would run to seven fifteen. Then the next interview would start at seven thirty. We have a fifteen-minute break, it would end at eight thirty. Then you have your public comments, and the rest of the agenda that you may feel you need.
Agreed.
So, six fifteen start, and a seven thirty start on both nights.
Six, yeah, right.
It, it's a six o'clock meeting. Talking about the interview started at six fifteen.
Right, right.
First interview, and then the second interview started at seven thirty.
Yep, six o'clock start, the first interview sixteen.
And obviously, if the first one runs long, that, that candidate has to be placed somewhere.
Twelve thirteen.
Twelve thirteen, six thirty, six and six, seven thirty meeting.
So it'll be March, March twelfth and March thirteenth, we will conduct interviews.
Yep.
And on March eighteenth, we will take the vote for the new town manager.
Would that, the March eighteenth, would that be at six o'clock or seven o'clock?
I prefer to do six, vote and get it out of the way.
Doesn't matter.
No, not get it out of the way, but, you know.
Okay.
Is everyone comfortable with that?
I would, I would also, through the chair, my understanding that the search committee is going to do the interviewing, we're going to do follow-up questions if, if we so choose to. I would like a copy of those questions that they're going to be asking.
I should have brought that up. They will be, uh, a copy of all the questions they're going to ask will be in our packages that we will be receiving. And they were just waiting to confirm the dates that we were, uh, going to have.
And just so we can prepare, thank you, that's good lead in, um, should we prepare for a certain number of questions? I mean, is there, can we anticipate how many questions they may ask? I mean, in the past, you know, we've done interviews, and each person, you know, maybe to ask two questions and a follow-up. I mean, should we prepare for five questions each, should, you know?
Uh.
Ask them that way.
We're going to have to, I'm going to have to have a meeting with them, again, just to go over the final on what they were. Be, uh, they explained to me that their, their questions would be in the same, in the same line that they were given, uh, when they went into executive session with, uh, the subcommittee. And that on any given question, if we want to follow up on the question, or we want to expound on the, on the question, it's totally acceptable. But how many exact questions there are, I don't know at this time.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to, uh.
I mean, I know.
I don't want to get too much into this, but obviously, we want to come across prepared. We want to also impress these candidates, so we want them, you know, if they're qualified and they're the right person for the job, we want them to take them. So I want to make sure that we're putting our best foot forward, that we're organized, we're prepared, and we put in some thought into how we're going to proceed, so.
This is, this is why I, I contacted them, and when I was talking and explaining to them, I wanted to know what, how it was going to, uh, be handled. And then the quick explanation they had, but when we got into the questions, he said, we will have a line of questioning. I asked how many, how many questions, and he said, well, we don't really know right now. We know, but we're still putting, compiling everything together. And I asked how long it would take before we get the information on each candidate and the package. And he, they advised me it would be at minimum of a week in advance. Uh, if we want them sooner, you know, I can make that request that we get them out to us in ten days, ten days prior to, uh, the interviews.
Mr. Chair? I was just curious, we know there's four candidates, I was just curious, do you know how many people they interviewed? How many applications?
I'm not at liberty yet that, with that information right now.
Okay.
And, uh, uh, I know they were surprised at the number of, they were, but we didn't get into numbers. I was more concerned with how many we were going to be presented with. And, uh, you know, that's where I stood, you know, the.
No, that's fine.
But we will be finding out that information. I mean, you know, you can speculate all you want, it's a small group, uh, believe, of people that apply for these positions. But.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'll be in contact with John Petfred tomorrow and tell him the plan of the dates. Um, I'm pretty sure they have finished all the background checks and all the secondary things that they've done, and let them know, and hopefully those dates work for them.
When I talked to them last week, that's what they were doing, they were doing all the, uh, backgrounds, and, uh, finishing, compiling all that. And I asked them, uh, I brought up the twelfth, and I said, would that cause you a problem at all? And they are absolutely not, he said, we're going to be done very, very soon. So I'm not concerned with having a run over or anything else. Communications.
Mr. Chair, we have a memorandum from Valerie Gingrich, Director of Planning and Conservation, RE, the multiple, multi-family zoning MBTA communities. We also have a letter from Hugh Vandermark, Jr., Nickel Street. He's, uh, he sent the letter with some concerns regarding the proposed forty B development at seventy-nine Nickel Street. Board to consider, six and seven, uh, Mr. Chair, you've already done those.
I skipped them.
Yeah. Just the communications.
Oh, I'm sorry, gee, yeah, there, one more communication. This is from a select board member, West. Good afternoon, Gary, after a brief phone call yesterday, I received the following text from Brian Kane at the MBTA Advisory Committee. Frank, I spoke to some old colleagues, North Wilmington is nearing final design completion, and the T has identified the necessary funding. I replied to the text, looking for a timetable with construction milestones and awaiting a reply. Hope this helps out, and I will reply with further details once I receive them from Mr. Kane.
And I'd like to add to that, I have been in contact with, uh, Senator Feingold and Representative Robinson, expressing my concerns that we have not had any communications regarding the, uh, North Wilmington Train Station. And, uh, uh, I just asked if we get some, we get some updates. And to this date, they're still searching it. I, as of today, I have been in contact with Mr. Robinson today, and, uh, Mr. Feingold's office today, Senator Feingold's office today, and, uh, they said they have not heard, but they are pushing the questions along, which doesn't do us any good. Public comments?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to give my opinion on a few things and ask some questions. With regard to the pension contributions, um, appreciate you bringing that up, Mr. Kyra. However, um, it doesn't seem like this board is really up to speed on where the investments are going, and if, um, there are decent returns, if we're bailing money managers out that may be playing casino with the money. And I would like to see a dedicated meeting to actually have a proper analysis and, uh, bring everybody up to speed, including the community, on why this money is such a large amount every year being put into that. I asked for a, uh, a meeting, uh, several months ago, to have a proper analysis of the employee, um, health, benefits and the cost to the town, and some type of presentation so the community could see, that the town pays a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, um, for any claim initially, before any insurance kicks in. That meeting never happened. Uh, I also asked for a meeting to have a dedicated analysis for employee, uh, for, excuse me, uh, the town, uh, vehicles that are insured by the town, uh, not an insurance company. That meeting never happened. I was told that an ambulance was in an accident on Route ninety-three and hit by another vehicle. I'd like to know if that ambulance was totaled, because we're being asked to, uh, take from free cash four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to buy a new ambulance. Why is that, and why is that insurance company not paying for that? As I read the, um, agenda tonight, uh, I realized that you can't discuss any litigation matters. However, I was, um, told that the Wildwood School, uh, oil spill was a result of an overflow. But in your language here, it's talking about an oil tank breach. Second is the sixty-four Wildwood Street project, I always believe that was a project that was taken by eminent domain, from the, uh, uh, family that lived beside the, um, the cemetery. The disturbing thing with that is, I checked the registered deeds, it's already, uh, recorded as a taking, but here it's asking to consider the purchase, exchange, and lease of that property. So that's a question, um, that I'd like to get clarification on. And, um, the, um, other thing I wanted to mention was, um, I believe, was it November or October you were hired, Mr. Semeglia, at the beginning of the month? Well, two weeks later, you signed a contract with North Shore Environmental, I believe it was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And, um, my question is, um, in that short timeframe, um, it doesn't, the questions are, did it go for competitive bid? When I was down at the recycling center, I saw trucks being loaded with contaminated material, and I followed the truck to, uh, the town of Holden, and it was being dumped on a private farm. And, uh, in the past research I've done, it was, uh, taken to a landfill. And so we have lawsuits that the town is, uh, facing. And so my question is, are we going to be facing another lawsuit with the arsenic and the radionuclides and any other contaminant materials that are in that, uh, water department contaminated material that are getting dumped on a private farm that might be threatening private wells or wetlands or anything like that? Uh, so that was kind of disturbing to me.
Can I make it so you're maybe not quite as disturbed?
Yes, why don't you do that?
Okay. Uh, this Jamie McGoldy, uh, the Public Works Director, has brought to my attention a situation that a member of the public was questioning. For several years, the DPW has been overseeing an annual operation that involves disposing of residuals that are left over from backwashing the filters at the two, the two-town water treatment plants. This material settles out in the treatment lagoons outside of the plant, is allowed to dry, and is hauled to be stored temporarily at the Towns Yod Waste Site Facility on Old Main Street, away from the public yard waste paths. Through a permit process governed by the Department of Environmental Protection, the material is mixed with temporarily stored catch basin cleanings, street sweepings, and sometimes diluted with compost material, forming a mixture that is managed by a licensed site professional hired by the DPW Water Division. The LSP documents the material, prepares samples for testing, creates manifests, and arranges, arranges for the materials to be disposed of approved sites. The haul sites change annually depending on the need, often the material is used as landfill cover. This year, the material was approved to be used as an agricultural site in the town of Holden. This is the second time I've answered this question, Mr. McDonald, but anymore?
What other companies bid on it? Did it go for a competitive bid? And in two weeks since you were hired, uh, how can you possibly have advertising that went out for a wide range of environmental companies for a competitive bid?
Because obviously, it was done before I started. We have some unbelievable department heads that are brilliant at what they do, and any procurement process would obviously be followed for whatever.
Well, can you tell us the other companies that bid on it?
No.
Okay, and was this company already paid that money?
I don't know.
So, the other question I have is the warrants tonight. What was the total, uh, amount of money for the warrants that were approved tonight? Do you have that amount?
I do. Let me book it up. The total is, sorry, I have it on my phone here, uh, February fourteenth totals. Is there a grant total? Oh, you got the grant, thank you, this is it, all right. Um, so general invoices, this is for the February fourteenth.
Just the total, total of everything?
Unfortunately, it isn't totaled, so.
We have the breakdown of each one.
I have the breakdown of each one.
Okay, but my question, Mrs. Misselli, um, it's probably like.
I can add it up for you, if that helps.
You could, for the general public, but my question is, when did you receive the warrants? Did you receive them on like Fri, last Friday?
We get them every Wednesday, to be reviewed. If we have any questions, we will ask questions, and then we sign off when we're comfortable with signing off on them.
And so, I believe that the, uh, the warrants probably totaled around maybe six million dollars? Is that around what it is?
No.
It does vary.
It varies, it's not always the same.
It varies week to week.
I, I guess my question is, do you feel as though you've been able to go, to go through all of the expenditures for like six million dollars in that amount of time?
Absolutely, we get every, it, this is a sixty-page, seventy-five-page document. It's completely detailed.
And so, can you tell us if North Shore Environmental was paid the hundred and twenty thousand dollars?
Not without looking back on the details, no. You think I remember every line item?
Okay. And so, um, the other issue I, I have is, um, the police department has a forty thousand dollar item, um, on the town meeting this year to clean up lead. And it's not like it's in the middle of nowhere. It's basically in our groundwater protection district, but even worse, it's in our wellfield area. It's above the wellfield area, it's surrounded by wetlands. And so why is there a firing range that gets lead deposited in our groundwater protection district? And why are we paying forty thousand dollars for that nonsense? It makes no sense to me.
I, well, hopefully I can make it make sense to you, Mr. McDonald. The range was put up, uh, say, ten years ago, roughly. It's a big system that collects the lead as the bullets are fired into it. And they go down into the chamber, and once every ten years or so, they have to, they have to do it with the.
I understand that.
The correct way to get it out.
And I also know that it was shut down. It was shut down for years because it was completely illogical to put a fire.
Well, it's not illogical if you do it right, and you put the right equipment up that catches the lead that has to be cleaned up.
In a wellfield, in a groundwater protection district? Forty thousand dollars, probably a fraction of this could be given to the, uh, department to go to an actual shooting range somewhere else that they have.
Yeah, well, we've got.
You know, and so.
Next question, please?
Yes, so, um, the, um, the subcommittee, you mentioned that there was a subcommittee that met with Paradigm, the Town Manager Search Committee? Is there a particular reason why that subcommittee hasn't presented the rest of the board with the questions? What, why are you asking for the questions tonight?
They are in executive session, we can't discuss anything with, that they've been discussing.
The subcommittee is an executive session, they get the questions from Paradigm, and they don't give them to the rest of the board? Is there a particular reason for that?
This is the process.
Yeah.
What do we wait to?
Like, it doesn't seem like people are prepared to ask questions.
Any announcements?
I wasn't finished, Mr. DePalma.
I think, I thank you very much for all your comments.
The last thing, I just wanted to finish with this, um, the, um, the federal government has a Department of Justice, and they have a division called the Antitrust Division. And the Antitrust Division is tasked with, um, preventing, one of the crimes is, uh, um, bid rigging. And so my question to maybe some of the members of the board here is, um, we have three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns in Massachusetts.
And we're only worried about Wilmington, sir, so let's address Wilmington.
It doesn't seem like you are, but that's up to you. So my question is, when you hire, say, an owner's project manager, and he does work throughout the state, and he might have five or six or four companies that he works with all the time. all the time, it would be very easy for him to contact the other four companies and say, bring your bids in higher because I want this guy to get the contract. And so, my question's simple, as far as the senior center and as far as the town hall, do you know how many companies actually bid on this work?
Next question?
So that, is that, is that a no? It's, it's, I mean, that's a question, is do I not get an answer? Actually, forget about me, does the community not get an answer?
They, that is mentioned in the meeting.
That's been discussed and over and over and over again.
Well, my concern, my concern is.
Next question, please.
When town meeting appropriated X amount of dollars for the town hall, and now it's going way over budget, and they're taking money from a water project, how is it legal to go against what the town meeting approved? Is there a particular law that, Mr., maybe Mr. West, you're about the only one paying attention, is there a particular law that you know of?
We're all paying attention.
Are ya?
Very much so.
Yeah, we are.
Well, Mrs. Moselli, I appreciate that. Could you tell us if there's some type of law that allows the town to go full with a building project that's in excess of what the town meeting approved?
Who says the town hall is over budget?
That's news to me.
Did you go to any meetings?
Yeah, I did.
Why did they take money from a water project?
They never took money from a water project.
They transferred money. It's a, it's a simple question, Mrs. Moselli, can you give that answer?
You're a conspiracy theorist. You say these things so people think they're happening, and they're not.
I was at several meetings, and one of the particular meetings was that they were transferring a very large amount of money.
I think you need to clarify.
You better check in, check your notes on that.
I, I think you're, I, I'm just saying, I think you might have misunderstood.
Okay, fair enough.
Next question?
Fair enough. Next question is very simple. Do you know what the town hall is costing us?
Of course I do.
How much is that?
Why do you care? How much?
I'm, I'm simply asking you.
I'm not here to be tested, Mr. McDonald.
You're telling me I'm a conspiracy theorist.
You are a conspiracy theorist.
And so, I'm just asking you, you're saying that you're paying attention.
I am not here to be tested.
You accuse me of being a conspiracy theorist.
Mr. McDonald, you're done.
And I just wanna ask you.
Mr. McDonald, you're done.
You don't know the amount.
I do know the amount.
McDonald, you're, Mr. McDonald, you are done. Mister Anonymous, you're done.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm getting to me, Mr. McDonald.
You don't know.
I do know.
No, that's enough, please.
I'm good, I'm good.
You're done, Mr. McDonald, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you for never having a meeting that's requested to show the community what the proper analysis is of this.
You're welcome.
Go back to first grade and try to graduate.
Do you, do you sit at home thinking of those things before you come in here and insult us?
No, I just like to know some answers, and I think it's fair to have the community know.
Okay.
And so you get, you sit up there like you're a know-it-all, but you can't give it a little.
I don't think I'm a know-it-all.
No, 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 that's enough, that's enough, Mr. McDonald.
I'm not a know-it-all.
Mr. McDonald, that is enough.
I'm not a know-it-all. Why don't you go to the proper departments and ask for meetings? I'm sure they'd be glad to indulge you.
You're the representative, right?
This isn't the forum for that.
That's enough, please. Announcements?
Announcements.
Any announcements?
See, I didn't get upset.
Yeah.
Ship has sailed.
Yeah, I, I'd, we got in our packet, an announcement of a retirement notice for, for David Woods.
Yes.
And David and I graduated together with Frank as well.
Oh, nice.
Wanted to make, mention and congratulate David for his 31 years of service in the Wilmington Fire Department. He's a great guy, he deserves the best in retirement.
Congratulations, that's wonderful.
And, and good luck, Dave.
Mr. Newhouse? Is there something you would like to say? You're sitting there so intent?
No, just listening, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, one quick thing. I've watched the Finance Committee meetings recently, and the, attended one of them, and it's amazing, it's a compliment to the town to listen to the various department heads giving their budgets, you know, what they've done, what they're planning on doing, you know, certainly Lou and his staff as well to, it's just, it's, it's refreshing. It's refreshing to hear all the positive aspects that are going on, no matter whether it's the elderly services, veteran services, or DPW, you know, just the various departments, all the, all the positive things that are happening in this town and are looking to happen over the next year, provided that, you know, we have a positive output at town meeting. But it's just refreshing to hear these department heads and their professionalism.
That's why we're lucky in Wilmington, we have such professional people. Dates, oh, new, new business? Any new business? Dates?
If I may, Mr. Chair, before we go to important dates, I'd like to echo what Mr. West just said. You know, when you're talking finances at this level, it's obviously a team sport, and I've been blessed to learn and work with many great department heads and their staffs during this four-month ride. Important dates, February 27th, Finance Committee, Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 p.m., Police Department, Public Safety Central Dispatch, Fire Department, and I believe Animal Control. February 29th, Finance Committee, Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 p.m., Wilmington Public Schools. March 5th, Presidential Primary, polls open 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. March 7th, Finance Committee, Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 p.m., Shawshin Technical School District. March 11th, Select Board, Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 p.m. March 12th, Select Board, Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 p.m. Those are, may change with the.
13th, yes.
13th is the other one?
Yeah, 12, 13, and 18.
Okay. 13 would be the six o'clock, and then the 18th would be for the vote. March 19th, Finance Committee, Planning Board, Public Hearing, Town Hall Auditorium, 7:00 p.m. March 25th, Select Board, Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 p.m. April 17th, last day to register to vote in the annual town meeting, excuse me, town election and annual town meeting. Town Clerk's Office open until 5:00 p.m., that's April 17th. April 27th, the annual town elections, polls open 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And May 4th, annual town meeting at the high school auditorium, 9:00 a.m.
Now turn the mic over to Greg Bendoe for veterans.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the board, it is my pleasure to present tonight's salute to service to Corporal Charles Gill of the United States Marine Corps. He served from February 1965 to January 1969 in Vietnam, then served in the United States Marine Reserves until January of 1971. Among the awards that he received were the Purple Heart, the National Defense Service Medal, the Vietnam Service Medal with two stars, a Vietnam Campaign Medal with device, a Presidential Unit Citation, and a Good Conduct Medal. Mr. Gill and his wife, Jean, lived in Wilmington since 1989. Regrettably, Mr. Gill passed away recently on February 6th at the age of 76.